For the Island Planning Commission to order. It is our custom to start our meetings with an invocation followed by the pledge of the flag. If you'd like to join us, please see someone. Mr. Barnes?
Merciful Father, once again we come before you. We come, dear God, helping us to remember the reason for this season. Help us to reach out for those individuals who are in need. As we look at this island, this island called St. Simon's, we're considering numerous opportunities and numerous steps that we may take, such as incorporation, such as becoming a township, and also as possible to remaining as we are. I ask, dear God, that as we move forward, we move forward in an organized manner, that we consider all aspects before making a decision. I also ask that you bless this planning commission, bless the islanders who have come this evening. These blessings we ask in thy precious and sacred name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank all y'all for coming tonight. We appreciate you being here and look forward to hearing from you about the items that we're going to discuss tonight. I'm going to read our procedures for those that haven't been here before. The planning commission hears requests for preliminary subdivision plaits and site plans. The planning commission conducts public hearings on rezoning, certain planning documents, and ordinance amendments. The planning commission makes final decisions on preliminary plaits and site plans and makes recommendations to the board of commissioners on all other items. The planning staff presents the case to the planning commission during a staff report. The report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County Comprehensivity Plan, zoning ordinance, and other applicable regulations. The applicant shall have the opportunity to present their request to the planning commission. It is responsibility of the applicant to make a presentation on the request and to address any conditions or factual finding with which they do not agree. Citizens desiring to speak in favor of and opposition to the request may then address the planning commission. Group should elect a spokesperson who may ask the group to stand to be recognized. Chairman will terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate his speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chair will ensure that each side has approximately equal time. Is there any changes to the agenda before I get started on it?
Yes, sir. Staff would like to have you amend item D to include the minutes that were emailed to you today for November 17th.
Thank you. Any others?
Well, we'll get into the ones that staff wants to defer.
Okay. So, the next item on the agenda is approval of the October 13th, and October 20th, and the November 17th minutes. First, we'll go with October 13th minutes. Anybody have any changes to those minutes from October 13th? See and none looking for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move they be approved.
Motion to approve October 13th minutes. Is there a second? Got a second. All those in favor signify with a raise of hands. unanimous? October the 20th, any comments or changes to October 20th minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I made a minor wording change, which I gave to Ms. Loving in discussing this, so it's not important enough that I don't think.
Minor change, okay. Any other comments? Looking for a motion to approve October 20th minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve October 20th minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve October 20th minutes? All those in favor signify with a raise of hands. One abstention because you were, you were absent. The minutes that we received for November 17th, any comments from changes to the November 17th minutes?
Um...
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman, I don't, I don't have any changes to the comments, however, what I do have is, um, during those minutes, I requested that, um, I be told what is the duties of this Island Planning Commission, and I've asked for that on two occasions. And if I am not bringing this up at the appropriate time, let me know. However, um, I have been given the ordinance for the creation of the Island Planning Commission, and I would like either you or Mr. Hanley to correct me or to inform me if I'm wrong. And I don't want to take up a whole lot of time if I know that we have a lot to, to do tonight. However, I cannot proceed without some clarification. And according to what I have here, it states that the Island Planning Commission is to protect established neighborhoods from incompatible commercial uses and inappropriate residential densities, to preserve significant historical structures and archaeological sites, to protect existing scenic or recreational value, to allocate land areas for commercial development, and support services to accommodate an amount and rate of development in appropriate locations consistent with the ability of Glen County to provide necessary public facilities and services too. And it goes on, and hold on, before I complete this, it goes on to say that, um, other permissible powers necessary to or convenient for it is to accomplish the purposes of ordinance within this jurisdiction, including the following specific powers: to recommend zoning regulations to the county, to plan, develop, and recommend, and upon approval by the county, implement procedures for comprehensive land use planning and zoning matters, um, to supervise and coordinate, and it goes on to say about that, to adopt or alter or repeal its own bylaws, and goes on to say about that. And it also goes on to talk about density, that we have the powers to, this ordinance may be amended by time and time, and it goes on to talk about what this commission has the powers to do. And according to what's been happening thus far, it is not in accordance, as far as I am concerned, with this ordinance. And if I'm incorrect, I would like to be corrected. It also says that if any changes are to be made to this ordinance, that the commissioners have to have a public hearing to allow the public to speak about it, and then they have a certain amount of time to make their decisions. So, in order for me to proceed properly and within the ordinance of this planning commission, I need to know, as I've stated two times previously, if we are adhering to the ordinance in which the county commission has amended several times, but that is on our county website so that any, any citizen here can download and challenge. So, you know, I'm not trying to create a problem, but I just want to make sure that we are doing what this commission was empowered to do. And if we're not, and if there's a problem, then I would say that we defer everything to the county commission, and let the county commission state whatever they have to state, and then let it come back to us. You understand what I'm saying?
No.
Oh, I thought I did a tell the last.
Well, here it is, right here. Yeah, it's right here.
Where are you reading? What are you reading from?
It is, it is chapter 219, Planning Commission, ordinance of 2-195, amended 8-1-8-5, 9-1991, 12-1604.
You're reading 2-19 what?
Where is it?
No, I'm trying to look at my book of what you're reading.
2-19.
Dash three, which says what? 2-19 dash three.
She's in the code ordinances.
Yeah. So, and then it says that if we change this ordinance.
She's in the code.
Oh, code ordinance that we don't have.
If it changes it, then the county commission has to have a public hearing, and then the public has to voice their opinion on it, and then, um, you know, take it from there. So, I mean, I'm not trying to create a problem, but I've always asked, what is the purpose of this commission? And for what, several developers have come before us, have said that we have no voice. We are just, we just stand everything and let it go, and I'm just not in agreement with that, and I don't have a problem with that, but I'm, all I'm saying to you is that we need to defer everything to the county commission, and let the county commission make a decision on what is what, and so forth and so on.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this, what Mrs. Ward's bringing up is important, however, it's, as a point of order, we are trying to approve the minutes. And I think, I think what she's asking is, is important, and we should, and we should, and we should get her those answers, but the question at the moment is the minute.
I think she's referring to the minutes and actually taking the minutes and for clarification. As I understand it, I don't...
You have to be correct. Clarification, because I did ask during the last meeting as to what it is that we are to do, how we're to do it, and what is in the ordinance, or what is presented to us to approve, because what I was, what I was told the last meeting is that, site plan, as long as it meets the ordinances, we are to approve it. However, I think that it is contrary to what is in the planning commission when this commission was commenced, and it's contrary, because it's like, oh, it meets the ordinance, planning. But it's, this ordinance in which the planning commission was developed, it says that we have a right to talk about density. We have a right to deny something based on density. So, I've asked for clarity, and no one has given it to me. So, I'm just saying to you tonight, I'm not trying to create a problem. All I'm saying is that if we are to perform our duties contrary to this ordinance, then let me know, and then I can proceed accordingly.
I think what we need to do is talk about this, because I, I guess, the way I read it, we're not doing it contrary to what the ordinance says. I think we're following what it says, and we have a difference of opinion on what that says and what it means, and I think it'd be good to have, do that in a work session and talk about what it is that you don't think we're doing, and we, some of us think we are doing.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I may also point out, too, that in past, past years, we've had training sessions for planning commissioners, especially new, new planning commissioners, that gather to come in on board, and I guess during the crunch, Mr. Hanley, we've, well, we were out of funds not to do that. We used to go to Valdosta thing and do that, uh, which was very helpful, and I think it gave everyone some perspective as to exactly what our duties are. Um, I would strongly suggest that, 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 that come back, that we do that again. And Mrs. Ward's got a great point. Uh, it's, uh, it's, it's valid. I do think, I do think, however, what the planning commission is, is given in, in terms of what they're asked to modify and look at is our zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations, and they are from time to time approved and amended, and we just went through an amendment, amendment process with several ordinance changes in which public was available, and they did, they did voice their opinions, and things were changed and made. That's the process. I think what we have now is a process that was approved at one point by the public, and it's now, the onus is on us to uphold that.
I hear what you're saying, Mr. Osery. However, what I am saying to you is that, um, everything was, the onus was not really on us. The county commissioners told us what they wanted, and we gave something to them, and it came back to us. But all I'm saying is, I just need to know, because it says here that we have a right to, um, deny something based on the community as a whole. So, if it's detrimental to the community, we have a right to deny it. So, I just need clarification on that, because if it's, if I'm wrong, then let me know, and, you know, and that's what I've been asking for, for several months. So, I'm here tonight to say, well, I can, if I'm voting on something tonight or voting against something, I don't know if I'm doing that in, if it's in accordance to the ordinance of the Island Planning Commission. That's all I'm asking for, is for clarity. That's all I've ever asked for, is clarity. So, um, I'm asking the chairman or Mr. Hanley to, and look at this document here, that's online, to just clarify it for me.
Does that document fit with what's in our planning? I mean, in our commission here, what says our powers or commissions are? Because it doesn't sound, it doesn't sound the same.
It's similar, um, because it touches on, um, the comp plans and things like that that are not specifically enumerated, and, and under the zoning powers. Um, there are zoning powers in there, there's, there's, uh, different ordinances that are mentioned in through, through there, and, um, you know, the density issue is, is appropriate through the zoning process and through the comp plan process. Uh, the issue of the comp plan was that it was done in 2008, when we don't, did not have several members sitting here tonight on that, on that board, uh, and it's due again in 2018.
Mr. Hanley, may I ask you a question? It says here, it's 2-1911, "To plan, develop, and recommend, and upon approval by the county, implement procedures for comprehensive land use planning and zoning matters." So, what, what are you saying to me? Can you explain that to me, so we're not involved in that?
You have modified the comp plan by changing the density on this island, as recommended in the comp plan, from zero to four to zero to ten as per acre. You also have mentioned, as Mr. Osery referenced, several zoning changes. There are other numerous zoning changes that were done and sent by both planning commissioners to, you know, forward for review, that, that are still pending, that will be coming forward to you at some point.
And in 2010, we did redo the comp plan with many public meetings and rewrite as?
Right.
Okay, and that's maybe fine, however, all I'm saying to my colleagues and Mr. Hanley is that, if that is the case, then it needs to be put on the county website so that when the citizens download what the Island Planning Commission is responsible for and what they can and cannot do, they have something that's updated and accurate, and this is where the problems come in. That's all I'm saying.
I, I will address your concerns with that particular aspect with the county commissioners.
Thank you.
And, and the county attorney, because that would be a county commission amendment that changed that though.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve minutes for November 17.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of move, of approving the November 17th minutes signify with a raise of hands. Postponements or?
Staff has a question that you postpone until the January 19th meeting, or whatever date you determine to be your first meeting in January, ZM 3126, which is the Lucas Office
We have a motion to defer, can tell, the ZM 3126 until January 19th.
Whatever it is, later today you will establish your schedule.
We'll make it January 19th, and then if we change that, we'll come back and amend that minute. Discussion on that? Does, does applicant need to tell us anything or anything, or are you okay with all that?
I think he's been notified of, of this move by staff, so.
Okay. Any discussion on that deferral? All those in favor signify. Wait a minute, we need a motion.
I need a motion.
It's the Mr.
I still move that we defer until the first meeting in January.
Have a motion with Mr. Humphries. Is there a second?
I second it.
Second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor signify with a raise of hands.
Mr. Hanley, I had a request to move, to move up, if we could, PP 3156 Glen Oaks. They would like, since they did it, it was turned down last month, they would like to move it up. Is there any objection for that, or?
That's purely on your all's motion, as to how you reestablish that part of the amendment.
I've been asked to move that up one.
I have no objection, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a motion to do that?
What do they want to move it up?
A Glen Oaks.
They have some appointments they'd like to go keep, but it doesn't really matter. I mean, it's, if they were here last time and got delayed.
They got denied.
Denied, yes, sir.
I make a motion to, uh, to amend, amend, to amend the agenda to allow them to be, that come ahead of the next person.
We have a second.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor of moving it up one, one, one level on the agenda to, to the first one, signify with a raise of hands. I have opposed. Five, two abstentions. So, we move to that one first, sir? Staff? Excuse me. PP 3156 Glen Oaks, consider approval of a preliminary plat for a 10-lot subdivision of 2.49 acres. The proposed subdivision is located on St. Simon's Island along Demory Road.
Is that, is that, is that the site plan? Oh, excuse me.
Correctly, preliminary plat. Directly across from Thompson Cove, parcel ID 0403571, 1317 Demory LLC, applicant and owner. This, go ahead.
Good evening, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. This is PP 3156, which is the new Glen Oaks, sorry. This is PP 3156, which is the Glen Oaks proposed preliminary plat. You can see it's located on Demory Road, where the green arrow is pointing to the red, to the red box right there, in case anybody has trouble seeing it, right there. The applicant is proposing a 10-unit, or excuse me, 10-lot subdivision of 2.49 acre parcel, and this is going to be, this is R6 zoning, and so the small slot would at least be at 6,000 square feet, which again is compliant with the R6 zoning requirements. The access will be provided off of a new road, which is to be named Glen Oaks Lane. This is a picture of the property, looking dead on from the intersection right there, looking west. Here's a picture of the property, looking to the north. The property is located just off to your left right there. And this is standing on the property, looking back east. Again, you can see this is a 10-lot subdivision. The proposed lane will enter off of Demory right here and end in a cul-de-sac. The applicant has performed some analysis based on some of the concerns that were raised by the planning commissioners at the last meeting. And again, this is, the property is serviced by Brunswick Joint, Brunswick Glen Joint Water and Sewer, and the access would be off of there. The applicant went out on-site and wanted to let everyone know that the project does exceed the GDOT line of sight criteria for 30 mile an hour zones, and please note the speed limit on Demory with the proposed intersection is 25, and is in compliance with all other standards with Glen County zoning regs. Uh, per the information provided by the Brunswick Glen Joint Water and Sewer, there was no evidence of sewer issues in this area, and again, you folks should receive some information to that effect. These are the possible actions, to move to approve, to move to defer, or to move to deny the application. Here are the possible motions, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Comment, just make sure we, we're all here and understand, it's the same proposal as before?
That is correct, sir.
So, and it was denied before for some safety, one that was stated that night was safety regulations.
Safety and drainage.
Safety and drainage. So, and we have got letters from the Joint Water and Sewer, and everybody got a copy of that, is able to read it and understand what it said? Just want to get all that out and see what everybody was saying. Any questions of staff in the commission?
I do have a question of staff. Um, with this particular subdivision, it does not require a buffer for the adjacent homeowners on Baysden, you know, because it addresses, it backs right up to.
It's R6 to R6, so the two zoning, excuse me, it was R6 to R6, because they're the same zoning designation, there's no buffer requirement between those two.
Okay. No requirement. I, I personally have an issue with that, because, um, if they were to go to the left side, there is foliage there from the condos, so that it'd be more amenable to put the road there, whereas if you go to the right side, and you're buttressing the, um, the backyards of folk on Baysden Lane, and they, they will have a road right up to their property line.
Carl, put that drawing back up, so everybody can see what she's talking about.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I thought the road is identified where it is to, to line up with the road across the street from Demory.
No, if you look to the right, and you see those properties to the right, and it, um, you will see it's right up to the, the property lines and those folk who are on Baysden Lane. So, there is not any buffer there for those people to, I mean, they have a, they have a road right to their property, you know, right up to their property, you know?
There's going to be a fence along that.
So, I need to know, okay, no.
I've got, I've, I've got a question of, of staff.
Okay, yeah. We'll get, we'll get some clarification, we'll get some answers from the applicant. Miss Ward, just.
Thank you.
We talked about that, I think, at the last meeting, but let's see what they had to say about it. Would you like to just move the road on the other side?
No, I'm not asking for anything to be moved to the other side. What, all I'm saying is that, um, something needs to be in between the road and these folks' backyard. You know, who wants a road to, up to their backyard?
Mr. Hanley, uh, what's, what's the required width of the pavement that would be in that right-of-way?
This one, it's got 10, and there's got to be somewhere about 20 feet wide.
So, it's a 20-foot wide, wide street in the middle of a 40-foot?
And I think what the chairman was alluding to is, I think there's a fence involved on, on that side adjacent to the, outside of Baysden Lane, too. I think they will speak for that.
But, but if the, if the, if the road were in the middle of the right-of-way, there's a 10-foot strip between the edge, yeah, between the edge of the right-of-way and the, I mean, between the edge of the pavement and the property line.
Right.
And, and maybe a little more, because they've got a little two-foot strip.
Right here, right there, that's, that's, that's.
This is the road.
I'm not talking about that.
No, 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 no. He's drawing you where the road goes.
Oh, I understand, that right here is the road, isn't it?
No, it's not the whole thing.
The road, the road is narrower than the right-of-way. It's, it's, so it's.
So, what's right here?
That would be, that would be just.
Right-of-way.
The road would be in the right center, which would be 10.
Mr. Chairman, I hope you will explain what this sidebar is.
Yeah, I, I will explain that. What, the road, in, 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 in helping, and Miss Ward, understand what's going on there, the road, the road width, the pavement width, the actual pavement width would be 20 feet, and we'll ask, we'll ask the, we'll ask the engineer to speak to this, but the pavement width would be 20 feet. If it's in the middle of the right-of-way, which is 40 feet, that would mean that, that there's 10 feet on either side. Of course, the, the engineer can help, help us with that. I think there's an additional two, two feet between the edge of the right-of-way and the property line, so theoretically, there could be a minimum of 12, of 12 feet between the edge of the pavement and the edge of the property, the adjacent property.
I'm going to ask that this, because if you look at what's here, it says on Demory Road, it's varying right-of-way. This is just on Demory Road. So, if you, whatever this road will be named, and who will? So, if you, whatever this road will be named, and who will say what the right-of-way will be, and where the utilities will be, the county's utilities will be, and so forth and so on. So, my concern is only that if the road is going to be placed on that right side, that there is a buffer or some vegetation between the backyard of the folk on Baysden Lane and this subdivision. In addition to that, let me ask staff this. There is property in the back, and we discussed this the last time, and this said that it may meet 6,000 square feet. "May" is subjective. Either it does or it does not. So, I need to know that these back lots are 6,000, minimum of 6,000 square feet.
Yes, ma'am. They're going to have to meet that minimum requirement of 6,000 square feet, otherwise they wouldn't be allowed to be split like this.
I hear what you're saying, they're going to have to be, but the issue is, do they meet it now?
Will I get the applicant to answer that? Any other questions of staff? Would the applicant like to make a presentation, please?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Jim Bishop. I represent the applicant. We have Pete Shonauer, who's the engineer. Pete, would you mind coming up? And Tople Hill, who's a surveyor, who's the surveyor. Happy to ask them to respond to questions from whoever, the staff or any member of the commission.
Well, maybe first, the last question is, the back two lots, which on this drawing say they're 7190 square feet and 6313 square feet, is that what they're going to be?
Yes, they will. My name's Tople Hill, who's a surveyor, and yes, the lots in the rear will be those...
Well, you can read, yeah, go read the numbers. I might be reading them wrong, but... They're both over 6,000 square foot, one of them...
All the lots will be over 6,000 square, or 6,000 feet or larger. The only one that really is, really close is lot number seven.
That's 6143, the drawing shows. Okay, the other question was about the road and the right-of-way, and do you plan on the road being in the middle of the right-of-way, or... Answer her other questions there.
I'm Pete Shonauer with Tidewater Engineering. Typically, the road would be in the center of the right-of-way. I don't see a reason why we wouldn't design it that way in this case. David Hanley already alluded to the fact that the pavement would be 20 feet wide, and with that two-foot buffer strip, or two-foot strip between the edge of right-of-way and the, our property line, gives us 12 feet from edge of pavement to the property line for the homes on Baysden Lane.
You'll commit that the road will be at least in the center and not further to the north, I presume that is?
Yes.
You'll commit to that, all right?
In the, yeah, in the, the straightaway area, there's parallel with Baysden there. Now, the geometry of the road, where the curves are, need to meet these subdivision regulations, so I got to make sure I meet that foremost, but along, along the, the parallel portion of our proposed right-of-way, we'll put the road in the center.
Is there going to be a fence along that?
We made provisions for a fence. I believe that's the intent right now, that there would be an opaque, probably, you know, six-foot tall wooden fence in that area. We, that's why we left that strip there, so, because we can't legally put a fence on the county right-of-way that will get dedicated to the county, so we had to leave some room there to actually erect a fence legally.
Two feet, right, two feet?
It is two feet, right?
Yes.
Would that be a requirement? Would you commit to that, to the fence?
We'll commit to that.
One issue that I do have is that, that is Demery Road, and I don't know if folk live there, but the traffic is very heavy. And I just think that to put in 10 lots at that particular, you know, two and a half acres, it's a bit much in terms of density. And as far as I understand, is that, as a commission, we have a right to question the density on this island. And I am going to question you as to why it is necessary to put 10 homes in that particular area, where there's only like 2.0 acres, and then that, that traffic, because adjacent to you, you have Baysden Lane, then on the other side, you have a condo complex, which, you know, and then, although I'm told we cannot discuss this, but that road and that, it's just very dangerous right there. So, I, you know, if you have, if you want to build something there, I think that it's too much density there. It should be lower, and, you know, less than 10 lots.
Anybody have any other questions of the applicant? Yes, Ms. Watson?
I have one. On the side where the condominiums complex is, right now, those individuals on the second floor, they have balconies back there, excuse me, and they're looking out on a forest, if you will. And now, they're going to be looking out, what, on somebody's roof and into somebody's backyard. Have any plans been discussed about putting some type of, like, bamboo buffer back there so those people are not, you know, to buffer that a bit for them?
We haven't discussed that, no.
We haven't discussed it. But, see, there's a privacy issue for both, I think. You know, you have folks that are now looking at a nice stand of trees or scrub or whatever's there, which is a lot of it's scrub, I agree. But now, what are they going to be looking at? I mean, do y'all not consider something like that as neighbors, when you develop something?
The site has its limitations due to the narrowness of it.
Sure. And so, in the back, you didn't consider the residences on both sides of that in your plan?
The residents on both sides. We did consider the residences on the north side of our property.
But not on the south.
I haven't discussed with the owner what his, what his plans for landscaping is at this point. That's going to be up to the individual homeowner. And if it's a problem for the neighbors in Demery Moss, it's going to be a problem for the homeowner, and he'll probably want to screen it. But I can't force him to do that.
Any other questions of applicant?
Yes. Would, would the applicant consider making lot seven, at least one, seven or eight a park, instead of a developed lot? Would they make it a park or a conservation easement?
I'm not able to answer that, perhaps.
Right. That's when you don't get the answer.
My name is Jim Bishop, again, we talked about that earlier today. No ma'am.
We did, and I'm still asking.
No ma'am.
No, okay. Those very strange configured lots.
Tople Hill, didn't you have an example of a lot that's very similar that's being used? Would you point that out to...
I can bring this up there to you, but in Butler Mews, there's one that's very, very close to this, has a very nice homeowner, and I can bring this up there and show it to you, y'all.
I'd like to see it. Lot seven, it's very strange. Lot's eight's a little bigger, but lot seven is very strange. Is this the same thing as lot seven?
It's a very similar lot to lot seven. It's a 20-foot, 25-foot depth there. On ours, we have 40, yeah, 40 foot of depth. On this one, you have...
There's a point, a point here.
So, I mean, you look at the triangle, this one is actually a more difficult lot to build on than this one. From here, if you hold that line and go straight over, you've got a 1,500 square foot building pad right there without even making an L to come up here.
Oh, right up against the back, no backyard, but a little bit of a front yard. Okay.
Anybody else on the phone?
I'd just like to say, it doesn't seem to me that it's up to the potential buyer, whether they want to buy that lot or not. If it's not compatible, then, you know, the developer won't sell it, so I don't see the point, if it conforms to the square footage requirements.
I guess for me, the point is, we just went through a six-month moratorium because of density issues. And I have to say, you know, I think developers on the island should give some consideration to not being able to, I know you have a right to develop your property, because it's R6, but as a good neighbor, too, and as a community, you should consider things like conservation easements, they get credits for that as well, the developer does. And so, I just think they ought to consider that. And also, you know, the community, when you have neighbors behind it, you know, you ought to be able to say, yes, we've taken into consideration the neighborhood we're building in. And yes, you know, we know we're taking down all the trees, and these people are going to be looking in our backyards, and we think we might plant some bamboo or something. I mean, it would be nice if you could come in here and just say, I've got six lots, I have a right to develop it, to heck with everybody, my neighbors, to heck with them. I, I don't appreciate that very well, after going through a six-month moratorium that we just went on, on density issues for this island. That's all I have to say on that subject.
Okay, thank you very much. This is not a public hearing. We'll ask for some comments in a minute. Is there a motion that someone would like to make? And we'll open it for comments.
This is a preliminary plat?
Preliminary plat.
I make the motion to approve the preliminary plat. It's a PP 3156, application.
A second. We have a motion and second to approve. We're now welcome to hear some comments. Comments should be questions to the commission. This is not a public hearing, therefore, we'll just try to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Julian Smith. I live on St. Simon's Island. I have several questions, and the first is, did the Island Plannings Commission take a formal site walk at this property? Simple question. Was there a site walk of any kind? A formal site walk?
No.
Was there an informal site walk? That is, how many members of the commission walked on that property, took a look at it? Several, thank you, three, three members. I have this question for the commission. Given that there are a number of mature oak trees, I'm not, live oaks, I'm not talking about laurel oaks, or water oaks, or other trees, there are some beautiful and very interesting trees on the property. Is it your sense that the site plan we see here, the arrangement of lots, has it, has taken into consideration saving any of those trees? Or is the plan, to your knowledge, and you can find this out from the applicant, to bulldoze the lot, to clear it, and to make it easy to place houses on these individual lots? So, this gets into the question of density. Is the density the developer wishes to have, does it grow out of the likelihood that the lot will be clear-cut? Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Well, let me get the questions first. Anybody else have any other questions? If this is not a public hearing, we'll answer the questions.
Right, Mr. Chairman, I'm Monica Smith, and my question is, at what point was it decided that we could have numbers and random alphabetical letters to identify property owners? None of us know who 1113 LLC is. We do not know whom we are to hold accountable for whatever is going to happen here, nor do we have any certificate that the people who showed up and said that they were representing 1317 LLC in fact represent anybody. I mean, it's, it's rule of fiction. How, how can we deal with 1317 LLC? That's my question, thank you.
Any other questions? I assume not. We'll come back to our motion, and we'll try to answer those questions. Questions on the trees and how you set up the lots? Just whatever your plans are.
Well, obviously, for marketability, you'd want to save as many trees as you can. So, I would, I would assume the one that the developer comes in, he's going to save the trees and the lots where he can, and then it would be up to the owners as to which ones would have to come down to build the houses.
Thank you. The...
I can answer the one about the, who is...
Go right here, Ms. Watson.
When you, when you see something like 1317 Demery LLC on the agenda, all you have to do is go to the Secretary of State website and look up the corporation. I did it myself. It's, it's free to anybody who wants to go and look it up, and it's got people's names on it, who you can hold accountable. Okay?
Yes, I did that. That person is not here.
Right, they're representatives here.
How do we know that they are really representatives?
That's, that's okay.
Because they say so.
Okay, Commissioners, we have a motion for approval.
I just want to say that I very much agree with Ms. Watson, the fact that I would hope that the developers on St. Simon's Island would hopefully read the public and realize that, that clear-cutting and trying to jam everything they can into the smallest piece of property is not what is the desired growth of St. Simon's Island, and that they would take those kind of considerations in line and try to be good neighbors instead of maximizing
And I think we all agree with that. We have a motion and a second for approval. Any other discussion on the motion? All those, excuse me, excuse me. I looked, I didn't see anything. Go ahead.
Before we vote on this, I just want to reiterate to my colleagues here that termination of need for the commissions, it says to protect established neighborhoods from incompatible commercial uses and inappropriate residential densities, to preserve significant historical structures and archaeological sites, to protect existing scenic or recreational values, to allocate land areas for commercial development and support services, to accommodate an amount and rate of development in appropriate locations, consist with the ability of Glen County to provide necessary public facilities and services to, and so forth and so on. So, when we vote, I want us to keep that in mind.
Oh, question. I assume you're ready to vote now? All those in favor of the motion signify with the raise of hands? All those opposed with a show of hands? Five to two, motion carried. Next item on the agenda. The next item is a public hearing. It's a zoning change. ZM 3153 Plum Brook Road. Consider request to rezone seven parcels at 2312 and 2314 Demery Road, 115, 117, 128, and 142 Plum Brook Road, and all additional undisclosed addresses on Plum Brook Road from medium residential to R9 one-family residential. Parcals ID 0402260, 0402312, 0402313, 0402314, 0414489, 0414488, 0402258. David Hanley, RLA ASLA agent for Glen County Board of Commissioners, applicant. William Dunn, Orin Douglas, Mary Hicks, Robert Neal, Mary Wilson, Foster, and Cecilia Buckin, owners. Cannon, excuse me. Owners.
Good evening, Commissioners.
It's yours, Carl.
Yes, this is mine. I actually have all of them tonight, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, good evening, Chairman. Plum Brook Road, ZM 3153. My name's Carl Bursa, I'm a planner with the, can you hear me back there? Okay, let me try. My name's Carl Bursa, I'm a planner with the Planning... My name's Carl Bursa, I'm a planner with the planning department here, and I'll be presenting Plumbroke Road. If you look, the parcels outlined in red are the, are the items we're presenting tonight, the parcels that are in question. We are proposing to rezone this property from medium residential, that is MR, to, excuse me, to R9, single-family, one-family residential. This is an entrance to the subject property, pretty much straight on from Demery Road, and you can see there's the area right there. Next one, please. This is the subject property entrance, looking north on Demery, and again, that's with the way that, sorry, with the curb cut right there coming off of Demery. This is to consider this proposal to rezone all of the properties that abut Plumbroke Road from MR, medium residential, to R9, one-family residential. The proposed zoning change specifically would provide a more appropriate density for this minor street. The proposed zoning would also eliminate a multitude of uses, including two-family dwellings, cluster dwellings, golf courses, row houses, and other assorted uses you can see listed on the screen up ahead there. There are currently seven existing parcels that will be affected by this proposed zoning change. These parcels contain a total of 23 lots of record, according to the county's historic lot line information. That means that on this part, even though there are only seven parcels for tax purposes, when you look at this in terms of proposed potential developments, there are 23 lots on there. Plumbroke is designated a minor street. This type of street is recommended to have between 200, up to 250 average daily trips or ADT yield. So, what that means is that we figure that each individual home will have a set number of trips that they're expected to make per day. There should be no more than 250 per day for this type of street. This is, the existing lots as of right now would yield 210 average daily trips. The problem becomes that the undeveloped lots have the potential to yield 270 average daily trips if they were to be developed to their maximum potential use. This would obviously exceed the recommended average daily trip rate. Because of that, we are proposing this rezoning, which we believe will have, will grant a more appropriate density to this minor street. The maximum units per acre would go from 16 under the medium residential designation down to a possible four per acre under R9 one-family residential. These are your possible actions to move to recommend to the Board of Approval, recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners, recommend denial to the Board of Commissioners, or move to defer the application if you so choose. Here are your possible motions, and I will be happy to entertain any questions.
Questions of staff?
I have a question. All right, so if we rezone those seven lots, and just clarify this for me, will it affect the other property owners on either side of Plumbroke?
It's every single lot who touches Plumbroke, the lots that were highlighted in red will be affected. No one else anywhere in the vicinity would be. Only those seven parcels would be affected.
Just the seven?
Those seven, yes, ma'am.
So, the others would not be affected by that?
There's, the seven parcels are every single one that, actually, take a look. Every single parcel highlighted in red here, that's Plumbroke, there in the middle, and if it touches Plumbroke anywhere, it's going, the proposal, the proposal to rezone would be applied to it. Otherwise, everybody who does not touch that, everybody who does not, who isn't at one of those seven parcels, they would be, they would not be affected.
Okay.
So, it includes the lots on the right side of Plumbroke?
Yes, sir. Both sides of the, both sides of the street, all the way to the end of the...
Other questions of staff? Okay, let me, a couple comments, that the, the lots that are currently there are variable sizes, as you've shown.
Yes, sir.
Okay? They're not, and they're not houses on all of them, some of them are undeveloped, correct? And what this change would do, medium density allows two-family, it allows 16 units per acre for condos and things like that. So, this is a reduction in density going to R9 lots.
That is correct, sir.
Correct, okay. Questions of the applicants? Oh, go ahead, excuse me, staff.
I have one question, staff, is Plumbroke Road a right-of-way currently?
There's a lot of discussion about that right now.
That's feared.
It may or may not be, there is a plat involved with it that has a lot of issues with it because it was done when there wasn't a formal acceptance process, and obviously by the quality of the road that's out there, there hasn't been a whole lot of county action on that road.
Right.
So, there is a property owner that owns 21 lots adjacent to that, who has a title, title policy to that road, and that will be resolved, you know, through, through part of this action.
Is he, is he part of the zoning?
Yes, sir, in a city's right front of him. So, he's aware of this.
If, if, if this is brought to us, will, will the right-of-way be improved to be a...
It's going to have to be, because there is no water, there's no sewer, there's probably no road down there.
I think a representative of the owner is here, so when we get to, you know, commands, they can speak on it.
And, and, okay, but that's, that's all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I guess before we call in one other question, the owners that are listed, they're all listed on here as part of the applicant, correct?
Yes, sir.
And you are the applicant, I presume, is what I read. So, now would you act as applicant? That's what it says. Except, that's what it says, I'm just reading what it says. He's the agent for Glen County. I'm just, what it reads here. I presume we can have all the owners talk also.
Yes, sir, this is part of the, what was alluded to earlier, this is one of the reductions that we're recommending as part of addressing density on the island.
Tell us who you are, again.
I'm Dave Hanley, Director of Community Development for Glen County, and yes, I have a string of initials after my name. But, yes, we are requesting this, this is part of what was alluded to about controlling density on the, on this one. This one was identified as one of the areas that could, could benefit from a reduction because of this minor street in there that essentially hasn't been built yet, but has this MR zoning, and it is on a critical point where we have ongoing issues on Demery regarding traffic access in that, that particular stretch. So, we would respectfully request that the commission recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of this request.
Before we ask you questions, would the other applicants like to say something? Any of the other owners or applicants want to say anything? Go right ahead up there, please, sir.
May I just ask, inquire, is, why is Mr. Hanley representative, why are you agents for this and so are the owners themselves?
Yes, sir.
Why?
Because it's Board Commissioners' action requesting this, because of, it is a board recommended item to reduce density. It's, it's the same thing as on certain zoning other issues, you know, we, we will recommend them through the board level, so.
Hi, I'm Patrick Duncan, I'm the owner of the 2314 Demery Road. I'm listed as William Dunn or Duncan, I'm Patrick. So, I acquired this tract of land about a year ago. It's my intention to develop single-family lots there, and we are zoned basically condominium. So, we're trying to do what's right for what a lot of people have been complaining about on the island, and that is reduce the density. So, I wish this hearing had gone first, and this meeting could have started out a lot more positive. I've worked with my fellow adjacent landowners and neighbors, we've been very transparent about what we're trying to do down there, and there are a couple, frankly, it's, the concern is the property that is on the east side of Plumbroke. We want to be sure that those tracts are developed in single-family as well. And so, that's the purpose.
Other owners, before we ask questions? Any other owners want to say anything? Okay, questions then of applicant? So, go ahead.
I just want to ask Ms. Hanley a question.
He's, he's still applicant.
I'm just over there. Okay, with this particular property, and I'm not dealing with this applicant, but the other owners, if they wanted to, say for instance, because this is probably heirs' property, okay, and if they want to build a home for different heirs, could they, how could they do that? Would they have to separate the property and adhere to this rezoning? Or could they build homes with, they say a breezeway to attach the homes on the property? With this rezoning?
If this rezoning is passed tonight, no, it would be, have to be single-family on a single-family lot, a 9,000. However, there's no utilities down there, so, I mean, there's a long way to go before development would occur. I mean, someone would have to run water and sewer down there to develop the property at all, so.
Yeah.
Ms. Watson?
I don't have a question, but I do have a praise. I want to thank Mr. Duncan, and I want to thank the rest of the property owners, that this is exactly what we're talking about when we're talking about our community here, and I thank you so very much, and I wish you'd gone first as well, because I'm, I'm very unhappy when developers come in and they don't take our community into consideration. And it seems like we had the moratorium, and now they just jump, and they're not, they don't, they don't live here, they don't, they don't care about our community, and I thank you very, very much for caring about our community as much as we do up here. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? This is a public hearing, and we will open the floor for any comments or questions that anyone that's here would like to make.
May I just make another comment?
Yes, sir.
I just want to acknowledge I've worked with staff and the commission in coming up with our plans, and the staff's been very supportive, and there's been a lot of pressure on the island, on us builders and developers, and so, it's not been easy to get agreement to downzone. But with the help of Dale Promanzano, we've made a lot of progress, so I want to thank Dale tonight.
Thank you, Dale.
Hi, I'm Bethenia Gibson, and as most of you know, I've been here, I guess, since 1980, trying to preserve my community, which is on Demery Road. I have been a resident in that area for over 75 years. My parents brought me there as a toddler, and the only time I've been away from Demery is when I had to go away to school because there was no transportation for me to go to school in Brunswick. So, I had to go away to school. Then I had to go away again to college, and then I'd come home in the summers, vacations, and I worked at Fort Knox a year, but dear old Demery Road was calling me back to Brunswick. So, I taught in Brunswick, I taught school 35 years, and I'm happy to say that the applicant happens to be one of my favorite students at Brunswick High. He said I was his favorite teacher, that might have been just to get me on his good side, I don't know. Did you tell the truth, Patrick? Okay. And I am happy to say that this is the first time since 1980, the eighties, that someone has tried to put houses on Demery Road in the area where I lived, Jewtown. We had a lawsuit with the help of the community when the shopping center was there. Everything has been trying to put commercial in, and we've been trying to preserve the little bit of Jewtown that's there. So, I am happy to see someone decide to put some houses there. There's one thing I'd like to know, we've never been offered sewage, as you know, might know. We've been asking for sewage for years and years, but finally we got kind of tired and stopped asking. We even were not offered water. The sewage comes right up to my property and it stops. It goes across the street, and it goes on down the street, it goes around my house, come behind my house, over down the street, but we have never been offered sewage right there in that area. We've just been recently offered running water, you know, city-county water. So, I'm sure now that this is going to go on, that some sewage will be available, because we got tired and stopped asking about, oh, four or five years ago. So, I, I support this. I live next door to the property, and again, as I said, I'm happy to see that someone is going to put some houses. I tell you one thing, I told him already, when he came to my house, I was shocked to see him, and he's working with us in the community also. I said, "Please don't put no Berlin wall up against my side, don't, don't divide me." So, he has promised me that he's not going to put a Berlin wall. Thank you so much.
Anybody else? Going, going, let's close the public hearing side. Applicants have anything else they'd like to say? Can rebuttal to any questions or comments?
I hate following Bethenia because she's a tough act to follow, but we would request that you all recommend approval to this item to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the proposed zoning decision as presented.
I second.
To recommend to the County Commissioners for approval?
Okay, yeah, I read the wrong thing. I move, I recommend to the Board of Commissioners approval of zoning application ZM 3153 Plumbroke Road, Plumbroke Road, Plumbroke Road.
So, we got a motion and a second to recommend approval to rezone from MR to R9 one-family. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor signify with a raise of hands? Unanimous? Thank you all. Next item on the agenda is SP... Next item on the agenda is SP 3124 Aviator Plaza. Consider site plan approval for commercial building located at 1830 Demery Road on St. Simon's Island. This property is located approximately 100 feet southeast of intersection of Demery Road and Terminal Drive. The building will contain wholesale, office rental, and furniture sales businesses. Partial ID 0402922. Brad Brumbach, agent for Brumbach Development, applicant Glen County Airport Commission, owner.
All right, good evening again, Commissioners, Carl Bursa again, and I'll be presenting Aviator Plaza, SP 3124. Project is located where the large arrow is, on that, on Demery Road, right there across it, it'll be, there will be a road that will be connecting it, it will be called Aviator Way. And again, this is to consider site plan approval for this proposed commercial building. It will be approximately 100 feet southeast of the intersection of Demery and Terminal Drive, and Mr. Brumbach is the app, is the agent for Brumbach Development, and they'll be taking, they'll be handling the project. This is a, this is a look at the proposed area, it is just south of the Rich Building, if you know, if you're familiar with that site. Again, there's the Rich Building, and this is the area to the south where the, where the project will be.
Could you turn those lights down over there? Over there, thank you. Appreciate it.
This is the proposed, this is the subject property, looking to the south, again, with Demery Road there on your right-hand side. Same area looking north, again, you can see the Rich Building off there to the right-hand side. The site plan is proposing a 14,378 square foot commercial retail office building constructed in a single face, and again, this is, the total site area is going to be 1.82 acres, 1.2 of which will be impervious, impervious surface area. There are going to be 71 parking spaces that are required for the proposed uses, 73 been provided along with all necessary applicant ADA compliant spaces. You will note that on here, there are two entrances on either side of the development. These are required by the Glen County Fire Department for emergency... on either side of, of the development. These are required by the Glen County Fire Department for emergency access. And then, um. Next slide, please. This is, these are architectural elevations. This again is in compliant with all Glen County, uh, with all Glen County code regarding elevation and height. So again, to, this is the SP three one two five Aviator Plaza to consider the. Oh, it was two four, oh, sorry, three one two four, excuse me. Consider the site plan approval to construct this commercial building that will include wholesale, office, retail, and furniture sale uses. All these proposed commercial uses, as noted in the site plan, are as of right approved uses in the McKinnon Airport Plan Development. And you can see that the, there will be proposed site improvements, including a type E buffer along the, uh, along the Demery Road area. And then. And then there will be a modified type A buffer here along the north, along the east side of the property where St. Simons Mobile Hallmark is. Here are your possible actions. Move to approve the site plan as submitted, to move, to move to approve it with conditions, to move to deny, or to move to defer the site plan. Here are your possible motions, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question of staff. Um, can you clarify something for me, please? At, um, with this site plan, is there a proposed restaurant there?
There is not, ma'am.
There is not going to be a restaurant?
Not a proposed restaurant, right.
Okay, so you said, oh, oh, you said right now?
Specifically, there are, there was not one right now. The applicant does have the option to come before us to request, uh, to amend the, the plan development text right there, but it would actually be the county who would be doing the, the proposing. But again, that would have to come before you folks and then go up to board of commissioners. Right now, the site plan as approved would be strictly for the uses that are in front of you right now.
Let me ask you a question.
Oh, go ahead, please.
When the RFP was submitted and accepted, in the RFP, was there a restaurant in there? And if so, if, if the airport authority approved it, then how could the airport authority approve something that needed to be, and Mr. Hanley, you may be able to answer this, that needed to be approved by the planning commission first?
We, we don't know what's in the RFP. That's between an applicant and them. What, uh, the airport commission did, uh, was, uh, I believe, accept the proposal. Uh, that proposal has to be done in accordance with the current zoning practice. At the time, the, the zoning case was done and brought before this body, there were uses that were in there for this track, which is part of a bigger track on, on the master plan, uh, that had additional uses in there, which included a restaurant, which was not recommended by this body and which was not approved by the board.
Right.
So that, that, uh, is the way it would come back through, is if it was, uh, applied for and it came back to this one, it would be ultimately the board commissioners that would decide whether or not a restaurant would go back in on this track along with others in that, in that same track body, so.
Okay, and also, when you look at this, and when you're going south on Airport Road, there is not an entrance into that property. So is the county working with the developer to change that island that's there to allow, um, entrance from both directions?
These are the two entrances that are proposed.
But that's not.
The island is right there. Yeah.
That's the island.
And then so you can see the northern.
That's one.
Yeah, that, and then the south right there. The island terminates before the northernmost entrance, ma'am.
So it's, it's that good for traffic? Or I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not making a professional opinion. You know? So.
We'll get to applicant.
On the other side of the island. I'm just looking at their side, where their, where their, where their, um, hotel is going. Right, and you know about that, so, traffic is cool? Yeah?
Any other question of staff?
Question of staff? Applicant?
Yes, I'm Brad Brumbach. I'm the developer of this property. Uh, we've, we've tried to eliminate any safety issues with the turning, um, in our entrances, because we do have a center lane. Um, we've also tried to, to work with, uh, the UGA, Don Gardner, and provide adequate canopy for future, um, growth on the property. Right now, it's a current grass field. So we've allowed for, for landscaping and, and larger trees that we can plant, not necessarily larger trees, but trees that will grow to be large trees. Um, we've also got an area in the front of the, the, um, exit here, to your lower screen, that we plan to have a F, F six Hellcat as a, um, memorial. We're across from the new hotel and FBO, so, um, the reason it's called Aviator Plaza is we'll have a little monument there for that. Um, right now, uh, we asked for approval for the current site plan for the retail space. Um, we do not have any tenants for restaurant, um, but I've had interest in that. But right now, there is no designed restaurant or any owner that's, that's requested, um, to sign a lease for a restaurant.
Well, I would like to say this. You're saying right now, so that is not a concrete, um.
No, ma'am, it's, it's not in concrete. I'm not, I'm trying to leave.
I would not want a restaurant there, because if you're asking for rezoning, because you have to take into consideration that there are, there is a residential area adjacent to where we're speaking of. And when it was already denied once, and I'm of the opinion that it should be denied again for a restaurant, and if you want to do what you want to do without the possibility of a restaurant.
I'm not asking for a restaurant at this time. No, ma'am.
You said at this time?
I'm, I'm not, I'm asking for this site plan in what I've asked the airport commission, everything else, for retail, office, furniture use.
As long as you say there's no restaurant going there.
Just to answer that, before he could, before a restaurant can go on that property, it has to come back for rezoning, which we have full, we have full authority in rezoning to turn that down.
Pardon?
And correct me if I'm wrong, but the RFP that was submitted to the airport authority, didn't, did it have a restaurant in there?
It, it specifically said restaurant contingent on rezoning. So it was, it was written in there, um, because at the time, I did not know that it was denied for restaurant, and we've gone through the process of trying to figure out what's allowed and what's not. This site plan is for what's allowed on this site. We've, we've designed it that way. We've, we've provided for adequate drainage, actually above what's required. Um, we've, we've provided for adequate parking above what's required. So it's, it's not the RFP to the airport, which the airport authority and commission has approved in highly favorable of this, this commercial track, that this road, from what I understand, was designed for a commercial access. That's why we moved, they moved, um, Demery to, to this road. So all, all I'm asking is for what this property is designed for.
Any other questions of applicant?
I, I admire your landscaping along Demery Road. I, I, I wish the whole Airport Road would be some of the landscape.
And as a reminder, I developed Airport Plaza where Kennedy Outfitters, my office and the brick is located. And when I came in front of you, I, I told you exactly what I was gonna do and did it, so it's the same intent. You know, my intent is to make this road, um, you know, beautiful and gorgeous. I think the airport commission's actually meeting this week to discuss the whole landscape plan around, along this road, uh, to increase the landscape for the new hotel, the new FBO, uh, this project, CPAC, everybody's in agreement that, that we want to, to increase the landscape along this quarter, because it's such a, it's such an important part of St. Simons, people coming to the beach and everything else.
No other questions of the applicant? Oh, excuse me.
I'm Robert Bur. I'm the executive director of the Glen County Airport Commission, and I could probably answer some of the questions and reconfirm what Brad just said. The, you know, the airport was looking to enhance the island and the experience of the island. If you remember, the, the terminal was basically a very nice terminal, but old and dated. And we actually thought it was a deterrent to the look and the aesthetics of the island and the thought of the island. So as we look to develop the properties from the properties previously leased to rich properties, to the terminal complex, to the, to the FBO, we very much, the airport commission was very much consideration of something that was compatible. And they're representative, just like you, as a, as a commission, to say what, what, what works well for meeting the goals of the airport commission and also the community. We're very excited that when we put this parcel out for requests for proposals, it was based basically on little values. We, we wanted to value what this is a compatible. Brad has already proven himself in his current facility, how very gorgeous facility he built on one of the airport properties. So we're very glad we've been partnership with Brad for it to make it happen. So, and he's exactly correct. We are, we're taking a proactive role, not only to have our tenants enhance their appearance, but also bring it toward another level, including the, of course, the tree canopy and bringing back those, that vegetation. So I think we're very much consistent. The airport commission is very much consistent of what the goals of this, of the body goes. But also, we're also consistent that build something that's compatible with the use of the airport.
Any questions of applicant? Thank you very much. Once we get a motion, we'll open it up for any comments from the public, any questions to us, if you have any, looking for a motion. Can you put the motions back up, please, sir?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve site plan SP three one two four.
Sir, a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Well, I'm, I'm just getting, we got a motion and a second. At this time, we'll open the floor for any comments that you'd like to make. Questions to us, please, sir?
Yes, Dave Olender, St. Simons Island. Um, and since the, uh, the airport commission is represented here tonight, as well as the applicant, I want to know if the applicant, uh, since they started the hotel and the new terminal, uh, the power lines have been moved across to this side of the road, uh, many of them. And I wanted to find out if part of the plan was to put all that power below ground as a part of this master development.
Thank you. Other comments?
I'm Fred Collins. I live on Eleventh Street, St. Simons. I have a specific question for the commission. Do you want to put the, uh, site plan back up for me? Um, in addition, I, um, I'm a board member of Bike Walk Golden Isles, which is our local pedestrian cycling co- advocacy coalition. And I'm a founder of the, uh, one of the founders of the Golden Isles Chain Gang, our local cycling club. We have about sixty-five members. My question is, is there a plan, part of this application, particularly in light of the dust-up over here at Jekyll Island lately? It was Jekyll Island, but it's still Glen County. The builder at the cottages tore out the MUP, the multi-use path, which we have here over there. He tore it out, barricaded the path, and then barricaded his entrance at the edge of the road. That forced all the traffic on the MUP over on Jekyll out into Beachview Drive. Now, I'm told they're gonna correct that in the next couple of weeks, as they have to pave the road before they can build their first model home. But, uh, Mr. Brumbach, you did a great job when you built, um, um, the brick down there and preser- preserving the integrity of the path. And I compliment you on that. However, I ask the commission, is there a plan that is part of this application to preserve the integrity of the MUP and keep it in service during the construction of this project?
Thank you, sir. Other questions?
Yes, good evening. My, I'm Mary Helen Moses, and I'm here, um, as a resident of St. Simons and also representing, uh, the Caskel, Mr. Miss Caskel and Miss Friedman, who own the adjacent property. My questions are directed not so much to the public side of this, the street side, but the rear. Um, and my question would be primarily, first of all, the excess parking and the parking across the back. If there is not a restaurant there, this is an excess number of parking places. And that parking, um, which is adjacent, there are parallel parking spaces at the top of that. We would ask that they be removed, um, in the sense that they are not necessary. We've already been told it's an excess. And that is going to affect the residential property owners to the rear. And so we would ask that that be removed. Our other question is, um, in the, uh, enlarged site plan that I don't need my magnifying glass to read, which was provided me by staff, there is still a grease trap on this site plan. And if. There's not now?
Be right there. Keep a look for the pointer is. That's where the grease trap was in previous.
Okay, so it has been removed since we spoke. Okay, thank you. And finally, a- again, I would be concerned about approving this if down the road, there, and virtually immediately, it appears, we were told by staff that, um, there was going to be a proposal for rezoning to include a restaurant. And we would request that the planning commission defer any site plan approval in, in waiting for something like this, because it, it would be a problem for the residential landowners, the adjacent landowners. So, um, with that in mind, we would request that you at least put the condition that no restaurant rezoning be proposed. Thank you.
Any, anybody else? Okay, thank you. We'll answer, get those questions answered. Would you like to try to answer those questions, please, sir? The first one was about the power lines and where they're gonna, any intent to go below ground?
It's Brad Brumbach again. Uh, the power lines stay. The bike path will continue to be fully operational. We'll have a full fence along Demery Road, um, with our construction entrance. Um, we'll have one construction entrance, uh, to the north side, um, with the gate back off the road, so you'll be able to pull in without blocking traffic. Um, the bike paths will stay open, uh, fully, uh, the whole time that the project's going on. Until we have to cut and do it at the end of the project, which would probably be anywhere from a, a three to four week maximum time that they might be closed. But at the same time, we would, we would make every effort to make them over the gravel. They wouldn't be closed. It would just be through the gravel. Um, as far as the parking is concerned, if this building becomes all retail, we need all the parking. If, if, so that's why we've designed it to be an all-retail building. We haven't, uh, deviated from that, um, request.
I, I would like to say to you that I do understand that you own the property that is a little ways up, no? The outfitters.
These are, these are airport pro- uh, properties on, on.
Well, let, let me, let me rephrase it then. I do understand that you like, you have a structure. You have businesses there. And I do, I see where, you know, and I was never in agreement with the county having that a mainstay for our tourists to come through, you know, when they changed Demery Road and they made Old Demery Road and then Demery Road. And however, I'm of the opinion that there has to be some sort of foliage there. Maybe not to, um, how can I say this, prevent your businesses from being seen, but where it makes that road attractive.
I, I agree a hundred percent, and, um, that's the intent. We've, we've tried to, to add some landscape buffers. Um, of course, with the power, power lines, we're limited with the type of trees that we can do. Um, but, but we'll have, just like we've done down on Airport Plaza with the palm trees and the, the landscape that's, uh, irrigated and, and constantly maintained. that's uh irrigated and and constantly maintained.
That it is. I you you get no argument from me. However, it is, for my opinion, is scarce. And I would like to s- if, you know, on that particular road, because of it's the airport area, you know, and and I think that the airport authority should address this, but we're the, you know, part of the county, that that buffer should be have more foliage and a little more, um, talk about density and density in terms of landscaping.
I agree with that. Uh, this property is much wider than the other property, so we've got more of an opportunity to do that here.
Let me ask a question that came about from the the parking. If I'm reading the plan right, with what you're proposing here, you have to have seventy one places and you have seventy threes, so you need those back there. Is that my understanding from reading this?
Yes, I mean, we've got three.
So if you were trying to put a restaurant in there, you would not have sufficient parking, because it takes a square foot for every it takes one spot for every seventy square feet instead of one spot for every two hundred.
Correct.
Okay, I'm fine. I mean, that's just another problem if you.
And the intent on the back is, um, you know, we we designed it so we didn't touch any of the trees. There's some oaks and some buffer back there. We left it. I don't wanna take any of the the buffer of the the foliage down there. I wanna add to it and fill it in um so they don't see us and we don't see them. Um, so that's the intent on the back.
I'm just trying to get an answer to that question.
But that's a type A buffer back there in the back, right? And it's got certain standards that are expressed in our ordinance that you you comply with.
Oh, yeah, it's it's much more than than what, you know, Rick CPAC did in in the back, but I mean, we wanna do it. I mean, we wanna we don't wanna see the neighbors in back. We don't want we wanna be good neighbors. Um, we always have been.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion on the floor. Is there any questions about the motion? Any discussion? Uh, the motion was to approve the site plan S P thirty one twenty four. All those in favor signify with a raise of hands. It's unanimous. Next item is S P three one four seven, Southern Soul. Consider site plan approval for the Southern Soul Restaurant and Love Golf Designs to increase parking and install a sidewalk. Proposed covered outdoor dining area for the Southern Soul Restaurant, Love Golf Design, is located at one hundred Brunswick Avenue at the corner of Brunswick Avenue and Circle Drive. Southern Soul is located at twenty twenty Demery Road at the corner of Demery Road and Brunswick Avenue. Partial ID zero four zero two seven eight eight and zero four zero two eight zero one. Larry Bryson and Larry Bryson, architect agent for Southern Soul Land Company LLC, applicant. Southern Soul Land Company LLC owner of one hundred Brunswick Avenue Quarantine One LLC, owner of twenty twenty Demery Road.
Thank you. Uh, Casey Dagenhart, Glen County Planner. This is a proposal for a new site plan to combine the Southern Soul Restaurant property with one hundred Brunswick Avenue, also known as the Love Designs Building. Uh, would you mind turning down the lights so they could see? Thank you. This this is the front of the property. Uh, Southern Soul has recently leased the white building, being circled right now by the mouse. And part of their site plan proposition is to construct a open-air seating uh area right in between the two buildings. Here is a panoramic view of the side of the Southern Soul and looking down Brunswick Avenue to the Davis Love Building. You can also see Circle Drive Alley, which is where the mouse is right now, which is where uh other proposed parking it will be or is located. Here's a panoramic of the side of the two buildings, taken uh adjacent to the parking area for the Davis Love Designs Building. Uh, Southern Soul, you can see up in the front, right up here, and uh Circle Drive is to the left, uh, behind that live oak. Here is a picture taken from Circle Drive, looking out onto Brunswick Avenue. These trees that you see are part of the site of one hundred one hundred Brunswick Avenue. Here is the uh chain link fence that they have to block off the view of the parking area, uh, the grass parking area in internal to that uh to that site. And here's the entrance to the warehouse, uh, and it's also used as an entrance to that grassy parking area that's inside the building behind the chain link fence. Here is the proposed site plan. As you can see, they have uh combined parking areas. They have uh proposed a new parking lot to be entered off of Circle Drive. Uh, and they also have a bunch of uh parking spaces uh along Circle Alley, Circle Drive Alley, excuse me. Uh, and you can see in the middle of the two buildings, the proposed covered area. Here is the proposed elevation. Uh, this is the the rear elevation. The new rented area is on the left, uh, the white building. That's uh on the right is the primary Southern Soul Restaurant. That uh looks like uh stripes would be a portion of the new uh covered seating area. And here is the right elevation, looking from the gas station next door, uh, towards Brunswick Avenue. And the lower one is the front elevation, uh, looking at the former package store on the right. And in the middle, the proposed new covered seating area or eating area. Uh, Southern Soul would like you to consider a site plan approval, but they have actually resubmitted today for a new site plan after they met with several of the neighborhood uh residents. And they have a new site plan they believe uh will work better for the neighborhood and would work better for them as well. So they have actually submitted to us a new site plan along with a uh tree plan that would uh potentially comply with the tree uh tree canopy ordinance. Uh, we have not had a chance to put it through the reviews yet. Uh, but I wanted to or the Southern the applicant wanted to be able to show you all that they have uh worked with the residents of the neighborhood uh to come up with an agreement that they believed uh would work out for everyone.
Easy now. We're gonna wait till we get there. Sir, you're out of order, please, sir. Is it time to ask questions or? No, I don't know if they finished with their presentation or not.
Um, so if I staff would like to request that you defer the review of the site plan to the next Island Planning Commission meeting to have time for uh staff to review the site plan, uh, the newly submitted site plan and the newly submitted uh tree plan.
Let me ask let me ask a question. Is there an opportunity maybe to ask some of these questions now? You want to defer them all and then ask them later? Okay, that's fine. Uh, the questions I had were not having to do what staff's gonna do, but that's fine. We have a motion to defer. Is there one made? Got a motion by Ms. Watson to defer a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Ward.
To the next meeting.
To the defer to our January meeting. Applicant, do you understand what we're doing? Okay? We have a motion to defer. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of deferring signify with a raise of hands. Unan- unanimous, thank you. I'm sorry, I was too slow. Come on, now, it's not getting any.
Okay, all right. This is last meeting, isn't it?
Hey, that is deferred till the December to the January nineteenth meeting or the our next meeting in January. At which time, I presume there'll be a new plan. We have a the next item on agenda is approval of the resides meeting calendar. You don't have a copy of that on your screen there, do you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we all got a copy. If anybody have any questions about the Island Planning Commission schedules? And I have a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Had a motion to approve, a second by Ms. Ward. All those in favor signify with a raise of hands. Unanimous. Next item is our nominating committee. Mr. Willis?
Nominating committee like to place uh before you the nominations of Preston Kirk and all as chairman and Desiree Watson as vice chairman.
Janet Loving as the secretary of the commission.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the floor. Let's, I guess, go from top to bottom in case there's a lot of gentlemen to me.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a substitute motion to nominate the following officers for the year twenty sixteen. Chairman Karen Ward, Vice Chairman Desiree Watson, and Secretary Janet Loving.
I second.
All right, we have two motions on the floor. The nominating committee made a motion, and we now have a Janet Loving is is there let's vote that direction then. Janet Loving for secretary. Is there any any nomination for that position? All those in fav- all those in favor of the election of Janet for secretary signify with a raise of hands. I think the other motion was the same for the vice president. Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Vice chair, Ms. Watson. All those in favor of that signify with a raise of hands. It's unanimous. The next is a motion for either Ms. Ward or Mr. Kirk and all to be chairman. So I guess we are voting on that. All those in favor of Ms. Ward, please raise your hands. Four, all those in. Mr. Kirk and all, raise your hands. Forty-two. I abstain from voting. Abstain from voting. That's what y'all want. That's what you get. Abstain from voting. That's right. Okay, our next meeting is scheduled for January nineteenth. Is there any other? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn. So moved. We are adjourned. Thank y'all for coming. Everybody have a